And we thank you for taking the time, and your busy schedules to attend this public hearing. I'd like to first, we're very pleased to be joined by our colleagues from other youth service agencies. And again, if you can just talk over the right here to introduce ourselves.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Rachel Jensen from Administration for Children's Services.
Good afternoon, I'm Terry Jensen from Department of Citywide Administration Services.
Good afternoon, I'm Stacy King, Executive Director for Education Services for the Department of Correction.
Hi, I'm Crystal Reyes with the Department of Health and Mental Health, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement for Division of Family and Child Health.
Hello, my name is Ashley Tran, I'm with Health and Hospitals.
Hi, everyone, Alvaro Benzo from the Mayor's Office to call back to Mr. Guado.
I'm Andrew Miller from DYCD.
I'm Jonathan Hanks from Human Resources Administration, and I'm the Associate Social Services from DHS.
Good afternoon, I'm Arabegh, I'm from Parks and Rec, Director of Citywide Youth Programs.
I'm Karen Keyes, I'm from Public Library, and I am the Coordinator of Younger Don't Services.
Good afternoon, my name is Jordan Mangwell, and I'm from the New York Public Library.
Hello, everyone, I'm Melissa Mallon, I'm the Coordinator of Teen Services for Queens Library.
Great, thank you all for coming. I'm not going to speak long, because I want to, we have one presentation, and we want to get to hear from the young people. But I just want to talk a little bit about the past year, we're very pleased with the efforts of the ICC. For example, I saw this, this is actually a guide to transitioning back to the Community Resource Directory. This was actually created for New York City Youth in the Criminal Justice Systems. It offers an array of resources in the areas of housing, practical assistance, education, legal rights, mental health, employment, drug and alcohol treatment. This was actually very well received, because it was designed by young people, for young people, and it was very well received by juvenile justice experts. It's actually being used where it was needed. For example, we know that this is actually being handed out in ACS detention facilities. We're very pleased that the New York City Law Department, which handles juvenile cases, is using it. Probation now actually puts this in their clients' folders, and it's even available at the three library systems. So we're very grateful for that. So special thanks to the members of the ICC Quote-Involved Workgroup, who designed this directory. We also want to talk, we did some LGBT competency training, this is the fifth year, I believe, in Quateron Group. So practically, hundreds of New York City employees have received this training. I'd really like to acknowledge the efforts of our ICC Worker Chair, Dr. Luis Osorio, thank you for everything that you do. Randy Scott for his ongoing leadership. And what's in Ronald LaVoy for being around. Molly, I want to thank Jermaine, who's also here as well, again. So before we actually, before we have a presentation from the Asian American Federation, I want to call up Luis Osorio to say a few words.
Good afternoon, thank you all panel members. On behalf of my colleague Danny, Randy, Scott, he's at the ICC, so sorry, but he's someplace else. But he just wants to say thank you for all the RHY conferences that we had with. The ICC Quote-Involved Workgroup, they play a very important piece. Because we're the voice of the city of New York. We can have two things we do without our voice. You're a volunteer, can I just have, and for all the members that are pretty involved in the ICCs? You know, okay? You guys could get up there, oh. So I've already adopted this young man, and his beautiful wife, just want you to know that he is one of the, is one of the... He is the number one strong man in the state of New York. He is, yeah! Number three in the world. Number three in the world. You gotta see this, can you please just stand up a second? Look at this. Number three strongest woman in the world. You know, Messa Fatah, right? And the ICC is exactly that. It promotes those endeavors for young people. And right now, one of the most important things that are happening is that many of the fights that we've accomplished, many of the things that we've gained, many of the things that we fought for, blood, sweat and tears, is being denied and trying to take away from you by powers that be. So more than ever, we need you to get involved in your communities, voter registration, voting to vote, and we need your, whoop your voice out there regarding those rights that are in law for now, that are being tried, trying to be taken away. I'm clearly really watching my words, okay? So without further ado, I'm going to just thank you all for being here. Eduardo is around someplace, as you know, none of this could be possible without Eduardo and his team, they were amazing. So, and you know her? Doesn't look like Robbie Wagner, but he does, right? I just needed myself immensely. We also have, and I want to thank Marcel, he's from Al, he is my counterpart in the police department. And I say that because they've been helping us so much.
So we're still waiting for our presentation to come, but we're going to start the public hearing for the testimony, so can I call Kevin Kirros? We're going to have to do something about these things, though.
Sorry. Hello? Oh, okay, so now that my design's over. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the inter-agency Coordinating Council on Youth, my name is Kevin Kirros. A graduate student studying for a Bachelor's in Public Administration. Other than lifting weights, my focus of research is disconnected youth here in New York City, and how we can improve the services and increase the opportunities for them to be successful. So for two, for about two years now, I've been attending the ICC meetings, as well as the District 79 Advisory Board meetings. And as I mentioned, my biggest focus is how can we increase the services that we have to disconnect the youth particularly, as well as increase the opportunities for employment and post-secondary education. I focus on disconnected youth because I was once disconnected myself. At the age of eight, my parents both deported back to Columbia, leaving me and my two brothers homeless and abandoned. At the time, there were no services for us, so we depended on the streets and the underground economy to survive. I've had many wake-up calls. By the age of sixteen, I've been arrested fourteen times, and I've even been to Rikers Island for thirty days, which I then decided that the life I was heading to wasn't the right one, so I changed my ways. Got my GED, and I joined the United States Army at the age of eighteen. Fast forward, I went to Afghanistan in 2010. At the age of twenty, I got the rank of Sergeant, I led my troops successfully for one tour in Afghanistan, made it home safely. I got out in 2012. I decided to dedicate my life to increasing the services for disconnected youth. So I graduated from St. John's University with my Bachelor's in Services. And one week from today, I'm finishing my Master's in Public Administration. So besides all of that, I want to focus on my two recommendations that I have for all of you today, as far as how we can achieve this mission, work together collaboratively. So the first one is, of course, increasing partnerships by working with local communities across the five boroughs to develop and support collaborative and innovative strategies to find effective solutions to support our out-of-school and out-of-work youth. Establishing programs that is like a pipeline for program to post-secondary education, so that our youth can, our youth can successfully complete post-secondary education, because nowadays in the economy, a GED is just not going to cut it. We have to push our youth towards more post-secondary education. As well as increasing partnerships with the private sector, so that we can increase employment opportunities and training opportunities, and potential internship opportunities to give our youth the experience that they need in order to participate in the workforce. Awareness is another recommendation of mine, that I think is the key, so that the youth can get the exposure. Because this is something that I feel that is not really spoken of. You see a lot of initiatives and mayor's offices for domestic violence for children, but I don't see nothing going on for disconnected youth in New York City. A lot of the public reports and annual reports for the agency sitting in front of me don't talk about these issues, and I feel that is something that needs to be shared and collaboratively worked on, so that we can focus on the key areas such as the South Bronx and East New York that are desperate need for services and these kinds of collaborations. I just want to reiterate the two recommendations that I mentioned. The one is increase the partnerships, and that's increase the partnerships with the community, nonprofits, the private sector, and even partnerships between all of you, so that we can create these opportunities for our disconnected youth. And just to give you a number, I'm happy to say that the number of disconnected youth has decreased in the past years in, from one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight in 2010, to one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three in 2015. That's according to a report from Johns First. However, the number of full-time employment between these young adults has decreased while part-time work has increased. So that's one issue that I see happening within the labor trends. So again, that was partnerships and awareness, some sort of public campaign. I see that there's a pamphlet that we have with the resources, I'd like to see an application, a web application, something like on a smartphone, it's 2017, something that our youth could just click on. Let's say they need some services, they could just hop on this app, and there's a map that'll show them, A, this is the Children's Aid Society, this is the YMCA, and we could fast forward the connections. That way we could successfully connect these disconnected youth, and we can have success. I want to thank you all for coming here today, working together, and push you all to continue working. That way we can reduce the number of disconnected youth to zero. Thanks.
Before we introduce Juhan from the Asian American Federation, I just want to say that Deputy Commissioner Sandra Gutierrez has joined us, thank you. Joe Patrino, also from the YSC has joined us, thank you. And we also have representatives from DOE, the Fire Department, and the NYPD. So I'm pleased now to welcome Juhan from the Asian American Federation. I was actually happy to be present about a month ago, when they released their report overcoming challenges to mental health services. In their report, they highlight the increasing visibility of mental health needs in New York City's Asian community, and provide recommendations for addressing the major challenges for increasing mental health services for the Asian community, so welcome. So, in the substance.
So, I'll just introduce myself, because I'm going to just... Good afternoon, my name is Joy, and you are the Executive Director of the Asian American Federation. We're really excited to be invited to this meeting. It's great to see so many departments here, so many people I've yelled at in my past. So thank you so much for being here to listen. We did this report because we have a crisis in our community, I think it's in every community. And I talked to my colleagues in other communities of color talking about mental health, and how it's really hard to talk about it because it's stigmatized. You know, when I was talking about, you know, my community, it's really hard, you know. The reality is, they say, it's hard in all communities, because it means something. It's, you know, we, stigmatized mental health has been something shameful, and we, and by hiding it, people who really need the help don't get the help that we need. Asian American Federation is an umbrella organization, and we have about seventy nonprofit organizations that serve the Asian American communities that we work with us. We work on immigration, we research on policy, we do mental health. We also work on youth bullying, I think that's a special concern for the USCD and all of you. And we, we actually created some things that we did, economic development. So anything that really touches upon the Asian American community, from getting folks here to having them fully integrated into the life as thriving New Yorkers, these are the issues that we work on. And our members are, and our clients are seventy nonprofit organizations that do on-the-ground work that gets funded by most of these agencies, so we're really excited to be here. And I want to introduce now Ju and Juhan, who's a Deputy Director, and Howard Shi, who's our Research Director, who worked on this report, and they have lots of recommendations that we can talk about with you, so thank you so much.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for having us, we're just going to stand up here. So Howard will give a little context about why we've done this report, but really, it stemmed from a 2014 report that we did on the state of Asian American children that talked about the rising depression and suicide rates among our youth. Which you start to do a lot of work around community education around this reality of how parents and educators and youth workers could start to recognize depression symptoms, how they could address it based on their kids. And from that work, we were approached by a lot of our organizations, member agencies, saying there's actually sort of this epidemic across all the segments of our population. And we knew from 2003 report that also our seniors are really struggling with mental depression and suicide rates. We have some of the highest across racial and ethnic groups, so a lot of our work does come from our reports. And so, based on the information that we're getting, we decided that we really need to do sort of a collective effort across the Pan-Asian community around what they were seeing frontline staff in social services, and how they were observing, you know, why people weren't talking about mental health, or if they were, how it was being addressed, what some of the challenges were feeding those social services or mental health needs. So this is the product of a year-long study of about twenty-two Asian-serving, Asian-led, community-based organizations, with interviews, focus groups, and roundtable meetings around what people were observing in the different Asian communities in New York City. So I'll, I'll let Howard speak.
So, we've already gone over the general motivation for doing this report, as some additional facts include that the Asian communities are going through a million, about fifteen percent of the city. And when we last looked at social service dollars going to the community, and what was going to our communities. We also cited some statistics, additional statistics from final statistics showing that suicides were among the, one of the top ten leading causes of death in the Asian community consistently from 1997 to 2015. Other communities will see suicide pop up once in a while, but for Asians, it's consistently in the top ten. And so, you know, Ju mentioned that, you know, we've been hearing chatter in our community about the lack of awareness, the social stigma, and then the ability to pay for mental health services, and the lack of services that are, service capacity of the community. So that's, so, and then methodology, it's basically a more formal form of what we do already with our member agencies, which is have focus groups and interviews with frontline staff and mental health providers to really get at what's going on in the community, and try to figure out what the challenges that they see in the clients that they meet. We also did a voluntary survey to quantify some of the capacity issues that exist in mental health service capacity for the Asian community. And finally, we also had a roundtable of experts to give us context for what we're finding and hearing from our member agencies, and also to give feedback on the findings and the recommendations that we had in our report. So, so to go, so we'll talk a little bit about the key findings of our report. It's available from our website, so if anybody needs to download a copy, let us know, we can give you that information. So when we talked to our member agencies, we found that there are some general factors that were common across the Asian communities in New York City. One is that poverty is a driver in terms of mental status of Asian Americans. So not only does poverty affect how people are able to pay for services, but the stresses and the burdens of poverty deeply affect mental health status of Asian Americans. And for Asian Americans, it's one in four Asians are living in poverty in New York City, so it's a very high rate. If you look at the numbers that the city itself produces on poverty statistics, Asians were among the poorest group for, I believe, eight out of ten of the last ten years that we were looking at. So basically, that's another report that we'll be working on to look at the Asian poverty in Asian communities. The diversity in the cultures and the languages in the community is also a challenge. You can't really just fund one Asian group, you have to figure out which Asian groups are touching which communities, and what do they bring to the table, and how they understand how mental health is approached in their communities. It's another major factor in how we need to approach mental health issues among Asian communities. And then, another commonality is the immigrant experience, seventy percent of all Asian Americans in New York City are immigrants. And so, the pressures of acculturation, the pressures of, the increasing pressures on the generation gap due to acculturation, changes in social economic status when you come from the country, you, a lot of people are unable to maintain their social economic status, and it provides more mental stress. And then, the current political environment is also creating challenges for a lot of Asian immigrants, and Asians in general. We'll talk, so isolation, we'll talk a little bit about that in the challenges section as well. Parental expectations of youth puts a lot of pressures on youth. And they do want to meet those expectations, and how they meet those expectations is, it becomes a, because it has a serious impact on a lot of mental health issues. We also see a lot of statistics for bullying and harassment, particularly among South Asians and Muslim Asians, but also in East Asians as well, is becoming an increasing issue, cyberbullying and other issues within the community that are becoming a challenge. And we're also seeing the following, of satellite children, where children are born here in the United States and sent back to their parents' home country to be raised until they're ready to take them to the public school system. And so you're missing four key years of parental and parent and child bonding. So you lose that built-up experience, and there's, you end up with children with a lot of different mental health issues in terms of trying to socialize both within their, deal with family issues, but also learning the skills of socialization as well. So we broke our report into four challenge sections. The first section, first challenge we saw was the lack of awareness and acceptance of mental health issues. And a lot of it is driven by, mental health is viewed as a Western concept, particularly the concept of individualized therapy. A lot of Asian cultures come from more of a communal setting, where people have groups of people that they can bounce their problems off of. And when they immigrate, they're losing a lot of those social connections, and they end up having to try to rebuild them, and that becomes a challenge in the community. Cultural stigma also has real consequences. People are afraid, if mental health is identified within the family, that even members that are not directly affected by mental health issues become painted with that label and become isolated, because other families do not want to be, do not want to have contact with them, and employment prospects become an issue as well, because you have one person who has mental health issues, perhaps you're not as a good employee as somebody else, just because of a relationship there. Mental health is also viewed as only for seriously ill, we use this quote-unquote, this came across some of our folks group at the sessions, in that, you know, there is also a lot of preventative stuff that can happen, to help people deal with the stresses of their lives, that can also end up saving the mental health industry, you know, saving money in the long term for us, for our communities, if we only develop these programs that help support and develop skills within the community to deal with these mental health stressors. And a lot of new immigrants will seek help from trusted community resources. And a lot of these resources also share this lack of awareness and lack of acceptance of mental health issues. So we need to figure out a way to train those trusted community resources, like primary care physicians, community leaders, religious leaders, on how to approach mental health care within their communities. And finally, we also see a lot of cases where the first interaction with mental health services is through government mandated referrals. So children are having issues in school, and are mandated by the school system that you can't come back to school until you go through counseling process. And this adversarial interaction is that creates a, you know, it creates a very bad image of mental health and lack of buy-in in the community. The second, so some of the solutions for these challenges we identified in talking with our member agencies is that we really need to create community education programs that introduce the concepts of mental health by not calling it mental health, right? Introducing it through existing service programs, leadership, youth leadership programs, for example, or parental skills workshops. They've all found that these are great ways to introduce ideas and concepts of mental health, so that when people start thinking more about it, they'll approach the staff, and then from there, a conversation can emerge, and gradually, if necessary, bring them to clinical services. We also need to build relationships and with, and provide training for the trusted voices and leaders in the community. We mentioned before, a lot of them may not be familiar with a lot of the resources and the concepts of mental health that are existing out there. And we need to create a system where they can share those ideas and learn from them in an open environment. The second challenge is that, you know, once, if you convince people that mental health is an important issue, how do you service them? So there's a lack of capacity in culturally and linguistically competent mental health services. There's a shortage of practitioners, and it's not just general practitioners, there's special, it's really hard to find somebody who's, who's got the language capacity and the cultural understanding, but also specializes in some of the issues that are really prominent in Asian community, like gambling addiction, domestic violence, or LGBTQ topics. You know, one example is that we, one community that works in LGBTQ issues, they can find plenty of, well, not plenty, they can find people that'll have the linguistic, oh, sorry, that's to remind me to pick up my kids, but not today. So, so they can find somebody who's got the language and the cultural competency, but the problem is that they not LGBTQ aware. And so you end up with people that are more harmful sometimes, in a lot of cases. And so we need to really build and diversify the capacity that's within the community. There's also mainstream providers, some come with cultural biases. We've heard a story where one person would go to a mainstream provider, and they would make assumptions about this person because she was a South Asian Muslim, that she was being oppressed by her people. But in reality, her concerns were more about acculturation and dealing with the issues of becoming an American, and the biases that are against Muslims in general. And so you ended up with somebody that was coming, imposing ideas of what was the issue, and not really listening to their patients. And also, there's also some other examples of how culture impacts that, and we'll move along. The second and third bullets, mental health practitioners in serving the Asian community, they all said that they have a sense that they work in isolation. If they're working with a mainstream group, they're often the only Asian service provider within the organization. And so there was a huge demand for creating an environment where the roundtables or the focus groups, they found it really, a really great opportunity for them to connect with other people, to talk about the issues that they're facing. And they want us to figure out a way to continue that as well. And then there's a demand related to that, to figure out a way to centralize the knowledge, the knowledge and the resources that are within the community. So either a database, or some referral databases, or some sort of resource where agents can find out who knows what, and then connect their resources together to help better serve the community. That actually sort of leads into the solutions that we're looking at. One is trying to get mainstream providers to hire culturally competent mental health service providers, and then train the next generation as well. We also want to look at funding initiatives to create networks where people can share, create professional networks where people can share their knowledge and experiences, and not have to work in isolation. So that's one thing that we wanted to try to encourage. And I think we're going to move on to the third challenge.
So the third challenge that we identified, talking with the roundtable participants and the interviewees, and the focus group participants, was that there really wasn't, there's limited access to mental health services. And again, we said that for the Asian community, the one-on-one individual therapy, that model is not something that is readily accessible. And again, we said that for the Asian community, the one-on-one individual therapy is, that model is not something that is readily accessible to a lot of Asian communities because of the stigma and sort of lack of familiarity with mental health as a health concern. So that was a challenge. We need to create multiple points of entry for people to be able to access mental health services, you know, although not necessarily calling it mental health services. Another thing that we found was that there has to be strong relationships between the mental health services and initial touchpoints. So people who go to see primary care physicians, home attendants, staff, community-based organizations, lawyers, religious leaders, they often go to those resources to talk about what, they're not clear is a mental health issue, but it is a mental health issue. So when, when those points of, when those people who had the first touchpoints with people in the community, how can they refer them to other mental health services? So for example, a lot of folks in the Asian community will present like psychosomatic symptoms. They'll complain about migraines or their stomach hurting, not reckon, and for them it's a physical concern. So they go see a doctor, but not realizing that there's a mental health concern behind it. So we need to be able to create stronger partnerships between those initial points of mental health services. Paying for services is always a challenge. Some, there's a range of folks in the Asian community don't have mental health coverage. And I think fourteen percent on average in the Asian community don't have mental health or health insurance coverage to be able to access certain mental health services, which means out of pocket is often challenging for a lot of people who don't have the means to pay for it, as well as those may, the youth who are on a parent's health insurance find it a challenge because sometimes they do want to seek mental health services, but need the permission of their parents to be able to seek help. And they don't necessarily want their parents to know that they are seeking those services. For continuing treatment, that's also a challenge, even for folks who go or often is mandated to go and seek help. They may stop symptoms once medication, once the medication, once the symptoms have subsided, thinking that they're cured. Or again, the stigma of taking prescription medications for mental health issues. And then they only, for folks, for parents who may refer their kids to access mental health services will only do what's required mandated and stop afterwards, not knowing that continuing the services is really important for their kids. So some of the solutions that we identified was, again, really funding our Asian, serving Asian-led groups that are already doing that work to engage community members at the places where they seek help. So instead of saying, if we build it, they'll come, where are they going to seek help? So for example, one of our participants in their group, there was a volunteer who was a trained therapist and the parents were coming to her saying, you know, you know, how can I help my kid in school or asking for parenting resources? So she realized because of the trusted relationships she had with those parents, being able to create a support or peer support group for those parents in the context or in that environment where they were already seeking help. And we're also asking that, that city and state agencies as well as funders also support programming that integrates mental health services through other services. So Howard also mentioned, a lot of our groups are doing like youth leadership work, right? You call it mental health or bullying, we said this, kids are not going to come, right? You have to call it something else that's empowering or providing a resource. And oftentimes, parents will be more willing to send their kids for academic help or leadership development, but really we're embedding some of the mental health coping, you know, coping skills or what to do when if you do face harassment or bullying. So embedding, supporting programs that do integrate already some of the mental health services that we think are really important, but not necessarily calling it that. Also investing in support groups run by our Asian-led and serving organizations for clients who are receiving treatment and are on medication. Again, there's very little funding for peer support models. And we really think that's, it's a really great resource, especially for peers who are the first to recognize when others in their group may be going off their medication or are noticing different patterns, changes in their behavior. We think that that's something, this for a collective cultures like the Asian communities, that that would be a really great, helpful investment for our communities. The last challenge that we identified was there's really little research that goes into the mental health needs and service models that work for Asian communities. We know that the funding, mainstream funding sources for mental health services really want to invest in evidence for informed practices, which is not necessarily the way that a lot of our groups will conduct mental health services. It's oftentimes problematic, anecdotal. So the lack of evidence-informed research on both the mental health stats and needs of the Asian communities make it very difficult for one, Asian groups to apply for resources or funding, as well as not very many opportunities to invest in alternative modalities for providing mental health services for Asian populations. Which also, it affects the ability of organizations to be able to increase acceptance and buy into some of these programs. If you set it up as sort of a clinical research program, people are not going to come and utilize those services. But if it's a way that organizations can use existing embedded programmatic, use social services and be able to observe what works and be able to get funding and tie research and programs together, that would really help be able to identify what are the best practices in our community. And last but not least, we need disaggregated data, not only for Asians, but all Asian ethnicities, which exists, but is not necessarily being enforced across different agencies. So we think that will be really important to be able to support. So the solutions to addressing that, the lack of research into the mental health needs and service models of the Asian community is that funders do need to provide broader proposal criteria for research opportunities to increase access for our groups to be able to apply. So maybe that looks at, again, linking research and programs together, being able to fund some of those, the work that's already been done in our Asian communities. And also investing in research opportunities or projects that would serve to build mental health service in the Asian community, provide incentives for academics to be able to, to do those research projects. And that would also help to create partnership between universities and CBOs that are already doing this work and be able to then identify what's working for our communities and be able to disperse or disseminate some of those findings as well. Lastly, again, supporting policies to disaggregate data for the Asian communities and assist in the implementation of that because we know, again, how many languages, how many groups in how many languages, Howard, in the Asian community? More than thirty, and more than sixteen identified languages. Right. So for instance, we know, and again, we're not modeling that there's, there's so many groups and so many languages. So for instance, we know that the Southeast Asian community really struggles with post-traumatic stress disorder from coming over as refugees. And a lot of the, the young people who are born up in the Bronx neighborhood where they were housed, there's a lot of secondary trauma and they're also struggling with mental health issues. So that's very specific to that refugee community that may be different from particular East or South Asian communities that struggle with something else. So that disaggregated data is really important because it really helps us understand the stories behind what's happening in each of our communities. So the next steps, one is that we're just trying to disseminate this report as much as possible. We really encourage you, it's not that long, to, to, to read it because I think you'll, you'll see that it's not, it's Asian community. We are the fastest growing, we've grown fifty percent in the past fifteen years. So again, our population is not going away, the, the, the needs continue to increase, but we're not providing the services that our parents and our youth and our seniors need to be able to prevent some of these things from happening. We have, and we don't have research for this, again, limited data, but we do think the fact that there hasn't been services in the past, as we're tracking this information, there's very limited data, but the fact there haven't been services, we feel, has contributed to these rising depression, suicide rates that we're seeing, especially among our youth and especially among our seniors. So we really encourage you to disseminate these findings. If there are people in your agency, people in your organizations, and you think will be interested in this work, please share the report freely and widely, and we're happy to share an electronic copy as well, it's on our website. We also are working to share this information with mainstream and ethnic groups. Every time you do anything about mental health, people come out because again, we are hearing stories. And again, stories are not isolated, we're hearing increasing number of stories of a lot of folks who are struggling with mental health issues and really are hungry for more resources, which is what we're trying to advocate for through this report. Another thing is that we want to reach out to existing networks of mental health practitioners to expand the network of resource and, and knowledge sharing. When we're doing these focus groups, we had folks who were both clinical and non-clinical programs staff, really excited to share information with each other because they never had been in that context where they could share that information. And then we're saying, oh my gosh, I have kids who could use that program that you're offering. How are you implementing it? Is there a way that I can send my kids to you? So again, really that resource and knowledge sharing is really important. And systematically cataloging the models of mental health service delivery that's been affected and overcoming the four challenges that we outlined. We have models that our groups are already doing, so rather than replicating or recreating the wheel, how do we, how do we catalog what is happening so that we can share what's replicable across different Asian communities? Again, we're encouraging funders, agencies to really support our Asian-led and serving community-based organizations to expand their mental health services, connect them to the resources needed to implement their clients, right? Again, a lot of these work, work that's happening is unfunded, so programs staff are creating curriculum, preventative models based on what they're observing. But again, it's not a priority maybe for the organization because the funding is, is very limited. We also want to connect groups that are interested in doing this work with models that is replicable across groups, funding that opportunities that may be available, as well as practitioners to partner with. But again, we know that the capacity for mental health practitioners that have language and cultural competency is limited. So that's something that we definitely need to, we plan to also to follow with the participants in our research study on specific requests and projects that they have requested, that for them, again, would really help to build capacity in the community, which is, one, there is, as an example, an existing effort to create a single referral database for mental health services with mental health practitioners in, in the community. There's not that, there's not many, but we, again, every time people ask referrals, there's no one existing one-stop shop to refer them to. So there is a project in the works that we would like to support and we think is really important to be able to offer that online resource so people know language-wise, youth population-wise, the kind of mental health services, where they can go, right? So that we're not so much. Another opportunity that we felt was important is a lot of our groups do ESL, provide ESL classes. We thought that was a really good opportunity for us to create some sort of curriculum around mental health, raising awareness of what mental health looks like, creating a mental health glossary, even vocabulary. We, when we spoke to our participants, there's no, many, many languages and cultures don't have mental health terms to describe what's happening in their communities. So if you don't have the language to describe what's happening, how do you talk about it, right? So at even the most, the most basic level, how do we help to build mental health vocabulary in some of the services that are, that is already offered in our, in our member and company agencies? That's my contact information. If you have any questions, comments, please. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share our work with you.
Okay, so we've got Department of Employment, Department of Education, NYPD, Department of Mental Protection, and Department of Neighborhoods are now present here. So I want to extend a little apology, my colleague has to be by the way, an emergency. So we have Lori, Lori, who's now going to take on the second part, she'll be introducing people for the meeting point now. And once again, we would like to thank the Chinese American Foundation because what they're saying is so important for the immigrant group that people that come here from coastal migrants, it's a very important piece of the work. This point, you can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, so we want to thank the Asian working group for their participation and for letting us know that there are so many people, so many organizations that need mental health facilities, need mental health training. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Lori, who would be calling, people will be speaking, so I'll be with my good friend.
So up first, we have Marcel Rothway.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, or yes, it's still afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Marcel Rothway. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Police Athletic League. The Police Athletic League, together with the NYPD and the law enforcement community, supports and inspires thousands of New York City youth to become productive members of society. In 2017, PAL participants experienced the positive impact of working with NYPD, Community Affairs, and the Neighborhood Coordinating Officers. This past summer alone, thousands of PAL kids were engaged with hundreds of officers at a variety of events such as Neighborhood Safety Summits, National Lights Out, NYPD Harmony Days, PAL Play Streets, and PAL Special Events. So I would encourage all of my colleagues in the CBO community to reach out to their local precincts and officers and to take advantage of this moment in time when NYPD is looking towards communities to build relationships. We have seen the results, and positive ones, in our work, and we encourage you all to do the same. PAL is also grateful for the funding and technical assistance we've received from the Department of Youth and Community Development, which allows us to deliver youth development programming to thousands of youth in all five boroughs. As we continue to sharpen our internal operations to improve program quality, we offer the following observations for improvement to our external partners. One, introduce the scheduling of formal orientation meetings with newly appointed DOE principals, DYCD program managers, and after-school program leaders. As we, a formal orientation process would encourage greater alignment and communication among partners at school-based sites. Two, consider that community-based organizations such as PAL have significant facility and program management expertise related to working with the three K population. A coordinated leveraging of that expertise would increase the chances of continued success of the rollout of the three K initiative. So we encourage our partners at DOE to think of organizations such as PAL and our expertise that we have in working with the three K population. And three, finally, to collaborate on planning to resolve compliance issues, leverage funding opportunities, and manage ongoing maintenance at our night shift facilities that host programming funded by DYCD. We believe a strategic approach to managing these areas, funding, compliance, and maintenance would maximize the benefits of our strengths, the agencies and the CBOs, to ensure the best and the safest facilities are available for programming. Thank you for consideration of these issues and your partnership with the New York City Police Athletic League. Have a great day.
Up next, we have Dr. Kyung Mi Choi.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kyung Mi Choi. I was a Korean teacher for thirteen years in the city of New York. And I established a nonprofit organization since 2011. And I raised my idea for Korean-American heritage foundations background. And I tried to do my best approach language to multicultural races, family, and immigrant family too. And in the meantime, when I have a lot of experience for Korean class, so many different students, different cultures-based family, they have a lot of problems and then it is related with a mental issue and it's very big problem for them. So I, I designed after-school program. And I designed, redesigned our characteristic for after-school program and language acquisition for English. And it is very helpful for not only immigrant family, but also multicultural, multicultural family. And second thing is academic skill, you know? And our course program for medical skills. And physical, physical approach, Korean dance and Taekwondo, martial arts. And alternate approach here. And alternate approach here, Korean culture, Korean choreography and Korean art. It is very come for their emotional and emotional and their their confidence and their leadership. So we designed and we provide increased, not only academical development, but also mental issue for different, different cultural students.
Could you please wrap it up with eleven to three minutes per testimony? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you want to wrap that up?
Up next, we have Odales Diego.
Good afternoon, my name is Odales Diego. I am a junior at Community School for Social Justice and a member of the New York Civil Liberties Union Teen Activist Project. Recently, under the Trump administration, students across the nation have had their lives made uncertain by the repeal of DACA. The Deferred Action for Childhood Around Programs allows children who are brought to America without documentation temporary protection from the risk of deportation, as well as providing them with board permit and gives them the ability to apply for financial aid. Without DACA, these students will not know how much longer they will have in the country. They go home and might even be sent back to prison, they never knew. I can only imagine how scary this will make me feel. As a student who identifies as Latina, and is a daughter of immigrants, it is difficult watching the news of DACA, of the DACA repeal, and how it affects my community and a member of my friends. I often feel for my community as I wonder what comes next. Not only is the future left uncertain, but it's also left in the hands of politicians who are not directly impacted by the issue. DACA being revoked has led up to thousands of aspiring young people wondering if they will be denied the ability to work after the renewal period ends. Without this opportunity, it was impossible for the youth to be able to provide for themselves and their families. It also posed the danger of being deported. The majority of Dreamers who were brought here at a young age grew up in this country and consequently had nothing in their country or religion or never have been there. At this point, the future of Dreamers is in jeopardy, and we must take action to stop the Trump administration from their attacks on immigrants. Since the repeal of DACA, it has been clear that both, that both we, the people, as well as the government, should fight to protect young Dreamers who contribute to the success of this country. I will encourage everyone to contact the center and urge them to pass, and urge them to pass a Clean Dream Act. It should be a priority for the Senate right now, instead of focusing on all the taxes for the rich. The Senate should focus on protecting young immigrants. If we care about making a country a place for everyone, we should all reach out to our elected officials and urge them to take action. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful day.
Next, we have Giovanna Torres Lorenzotti.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Giovanna Torres Lorenzotti. I am a junior at the N Y C I School and a member of the N Y C L U's Teen Activist Project. I am an ambitious sixteen-year-old Latina, part of the LGBTQ community, and someone who believes in equality and respect for all. Transgender and gender non-comporting students face many challenges at school, in their community, and at, and at home. This can include anything from physical harassment, verbal harassment, and even being denied to use the bathroom which they identify with. To address these issues, uh, to address these issues that the LGBTQ plus students are experiencing, David Patterson signed the Duin D for All Students Act into law in 2010, and it was implemented by 2012. By signing D O S A into law, it was made clear that New York State is no place for discrimination on the basis of gender, gender identity, gender expression, and all other identity categories. Additionally, there are components to this law that enforce the schools to make sure that students are able to use the bathroom that they choose. Progress has been made, but there are so many hurdles to overcome. Despite being a requirement for schools to allow students to use the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity, many schools are not following this law. In addition to this, they still have just two segregated bathrooms labeled male and female. But gender is fluid. According to apath.org, there is now reported sixty-three different gender identities, and many individuals have begun to identify themselves somewhere on that spectrum. Many trans individuals that I have talked to feel that having a label outside the bathroom causes them many barriers. Some have expressed to me that sometimes they will go the whole day without drinking water just because they don't want to face the discrimination and harassment from classmates. As someone who is cisgender, meaning I identify with the sex assigned to her female, I along with other cisgender people in the room recognize what it's like to go to the bathroom with ease. It is a privilege which is imperative to recognize and use as a platform to make everyone else just as comfortable as we are. In many schools, they have designated single-stall bathrooms for anyone to use. However, this isn't enough. I ask you to address segregated bathrooms with a simple solution. The only option that remains is to mandate all N Y C public high schools to change their gender signs from male and female to gender neutral. And listing what the personal encounter, for example, urinals, stalls, murinals, and single stalls. This solution is not only cost efficient, but it will normalize bathrooms as being a common space. Consider these individuals as human beings who just want to be seen as equal and not feel discriminated against especially by a conformity label. Thank you for your time and consideration on this issue.
Up next, we have Liam O'Connell.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Liam O'Connell. I am also a member of the Teen Activist Project of the New York Civil Liberties Union, and I'm a senior at the New York City Labs School. The school whose students are lucky enough not to be a part of the nearly one hundred thousand New York City students who every morning have to go through metal detectors to enter school. It is a school whose students, by virtue of attending the school in Aqua and District Two, are not faced with unsettlingly high police presence or with routine searches that violate their civil liberties. I wish this was a story that I could tell for all of New York City public schools, but unfortunately, it is not. Through excessive policing, zero tolerance policies, and in-school arrests, we are taking a fundamentally incorrect approach to keeping our students safe and creating a better learning environment. You would think that the reason for placing police officers in public schools would be to ensure that students can learn and teachers can teach in an environment that they know is safe. But keeping schools safe and looking after students is a radically different business to the one that our police officers are trained for. Keeping schools safe far is a different approach to keeping streets safe. And the entrance to a public school shouldn't look like the security line in the airport. Schools' safety agents are, at the end of the day, simply police officers. Police officers do not receive adequate training in youth behavior development in the way that guidance counselors or social workers do. Yet, there are far more police officers in public schools than there are guidance counselors or social workers. The New York City Department of Education says on its website that its goal is to provide a safe, supportive school environment which depends on students, staff, and parents demonstrating mutual respect. How does outnumbering guidance counselors or police officers demonstrate a commitment to a supportive environment? Students do not get the support they need when instead of meeting with a guidance counselor, any infractions are dealt with by the police force through arrest or detainment. The relationship between schools, school and police officers in their school is not one of mutual respect either. Police officers in schools are often disrespectful and overly harsh with students, again demonstrating a lack of proper training in dealing with youth. On top of that, statistics reveal the way in which, reveal that the way in which our schools are policed is anything but equal. If the goal is to make every school a safe and supportive environment for all, then why are we singling out students to police more harshly based on race? The reality is at N Y C that Black and Hispanic students are over twice as likely to have to face metal detectors in their school. Is the purpose of metal detectors then to build up better school environments in schools that have been previously deprived? Statistics don't show us that either, because the Department of Education continues to spend less per student in schools with metal detectors than they do on students in schools without. My fellow New York students should have equal access to the resources that they need to learn and the safe environment which they facilitate. I'm immensely grateful for the work of the N Y C L U and other organizations due to raise awareness to this issue, but we need to change our approach to school safety to reach the goal of a safe, supportive environment. We need to make schools feel welcoming by removing ineffective metal detectors, make our students feel like criminals. Our schools will be infinitely more safe when we treat students as though they're valued in the community, not as though they are to be inherently distrusted. Thank you all for your time.
Up next, we'll hear from Anna Garrison-Badell, and afterwards, we will hear from Alessia Milstein.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anna Garrison-Badell, and I'm a member of the Teen Activist Project of the N Y C L U and a student at Bard High School, Early College Union. Throughout my years in public school in New York City, I've been incredibly lucky to have extremely progressive, inclusive, and supportive sex education. I've learned about contraception and how to get free access to confidential procedures. I've learned about sexually transmitted diseases and infections, and I'm unfortunate enough to have had inappropriate sex ed classes in middle school as well as high school. In sixth grade, in the outside room professional called Nightzar gave to my middle school and explained to us awkward and equally eleven-year-olds about puberty. In eighth grade, our teachers taught us how to prevent S T E from S T I's as well as practicing. And in ninth grade, I received one semester of coke, which covered many of the required topics, but was lacking in LGBTQ inclusive and consent-based information. Compared to most N Y C students overall, I've received a solid foundation in important topics that will help me navigate the critical part of my life as I grow mature. Unfortunately, this is not the case for many other New York City students who have far fewer opportunities than I have in the world to know each other. Comprehensive, comprehensive sex education in New York City is frequently inadequate and revisionist in so many annoying aspects for young people who desperately need information. More often than not, sex ed is taught by an uncomplimented teacher or teacher with limited experience or support from the team. We need reform and we need it fast. Most ninety percent of teen pregnancies are unintended, about seventy percent end miniaturized, and the rates of sexually transmitted infections are unacceptably high, especially in terms of women. Not only do we give sex ed to people who are great, capable, but we need to cover topics that are all inclusive and emphasize constructing, constructing and maintaining healthy sexual relationships. Most of the time, sex ed that we are taught is about sex between straight cisgender couples, when in reality, many teens do not read this narrative. What do LGBTQ students question when they have questions about their own sexuality and relationships? When the curriculum makes it clear to them? Why should straight cisgender students get preferential treatment? We need to learn about sexuality and gender in the curriculum. So while students are beginning to explore themselves and their own sexuality and gender, they can understand it better and will be able to access free services and information freely. We also aren't taught about healthy relationships, even though adolescence is the moral goal of emotions. As pre-teens and teens, we are just starting to understand ourselves and the environment. Learning about me taking strong blocks with others is critically important for our mental health, our self-esteem, and our wellbeing. Given what is happening in our country right now with all of the sexual assault allegations, we need to learn about consent as early as possible to prevent sexual harassment and assault, rape, and abuse. I am so grateful to be part of Teen Activist Project because we learn about rights of students, especially pertaining to health services and sex education in schools. We conduct workshops in schools that can help other students become more informed about their rights, and we have discussions about issues that have to do with sex education. All students should be able to have a self-awareness, to know their rights regarding access to health services, to know where to go for these services, and to know who to go to. Sex education is equally as important as any other subject. Your students need to learn how to communicate relationships, how to understand themselves and others better, and how to practice safer sex if they choose to do so. We should be taught how to expect to clinics, how to get dental and visibility. We should be taught that if you're too uncomfortable with half your parents, there is courses in our school that can help us when we have questions or need assistance. Inclusive sex education should be a right, and it's right to apply to all New York City high school students. Stop this privilege.
Up next, we'll hear from Kyung Milstein, and then after that, we'll listen to Isaac Jason.
Good afternoon. My name is Alessia Milstein, and I'm a senior at Millennium High School in Manhattan and a member of the New York Civil Liberties, Liberties Union Teen Activist Project. New York City prides itself on its diversity and is widely known as progressive place, yet New York City's public school system is the most segregated school system in the nation. And I, as a public preschool student, did not learn this until my senior year. Why is it that I was taught ground versus supportive education solve these issues? My curriculum assured me that after the civil rights movement and the work of my third year junior, the issue of school segregation has been solved. Unfortunately, this problem continues, and we need to address it. The wealthier the school, the whiter the school tends to be. It is completely ridiculous that a white student gets an ample amount of resources from their public schools, while public schools in lower-income areas and the majority of students of color will not even be offered A P classes. Currently, I'm taking A P World History and A P Literature, and last year I was able to take A P United States History. How many students within New York City's education system can say that they have the same opportunity to take classes akin to the, to those? Education is a right, not a privilege, yet the quality of education depends on the school's location and income of families that attend. School segregation reinforces racial inequality and continues allowing one certain group to stay in power while the others are left in the cold. One group of students is able to attend high-quality zone elementary schools, giving them an advantage again to high-quality middle schools, which provides them with the comprehensive education and resources to get into one of New York City's most prestigious public high schools. From there, they're able to gain access to an excellent four-year college. On the other hand, many of the public schools in low-income areas have heightened police presence that causes students to be treated as criminals rather than students. School choice and the complicated issues and processes are said to give students more options, yet from the start, students of color had a disadvantage because a few factors out of their control, where they live and how much money their families have, largely determine how well they can prepare to compete in this system. Some steps to take into consideration in looking to be segregated is including these issues into our school's curriculum in middle school. The history of racism in America is not a positive one, but it is imperative that we confront this history and educate young people about how this history has created inequalities that still persist in our society. Additionally, there should be more diversity within our teachers. Representation is important, and being able to see yourself in a teacher can be a huge catalyst to student success. For example, research shows Black students are fifty percent more likely to be recommended for a gifted and talented program if their teacher is Black. Having teachers reflect students' identities can also help students envision their possibilities with the future. School segregation is harming our city's kids, is setting many bright individuals up for failure, and it continues a legacy of racism that has caused segregation. This can no longer be brushed into the realm. It's imperative that action is done to resolve this problem.
Next, we have Isaac Jason, and after, we'll listen to Cole Newfield.
Hello, my name's Isaac Jason, and I'm a junior at Davidson High School. I want to talk to you today about the importance of quality sex education in New York City public schools. I'm fortunate to be able to go to one of the best high schools in the city and per D O E requirements, required to take health class for one semester. However, even though schools are required to provide sex education as part of health class, this usually amounts to only a few minutes of class time, and the information provided in those few minutes may not always be correct. This will discourage many kids from expressing themselves, they somehow identify as fear of backlash from their school, their friends, and their families. Today, there's no citywide standard for sex ed, meaning schools may take this really important subject to whatever extent they believe is necessary, or more often, what the administration or teachers believe about gender and sexual identity. This often creates a curriculum lesson based only on abstinence. This is extremely important to emphasize. However, the problem with this is it creates a wildly inconsistent system of sex ed. However, the problem with this is it creates a wildly inconsistent system of sex ed. Where kids from one school may get a completely different education from the kids of another. Some kids may leave their class feeling encouraged to express themselves, uncomfortable with identities, but others leave class feeling terrible about themselves and mazy about their gender, about their identity, gender, sexuality. I'm part of the NYCLU's Teen Activist Project, where I'm able to talk to other teens the same way I do about the issue we face today. I've heard people talk about the need for sex education, and I've experienced it myself in my own school. Adolescents are working to figure out who they are, and that means they're exploring their identities for the first time in their lives. For this reason, it's important that we provide all the help and guidance students need to come to terms with their own identities. We must make everyone feel comfortable expressing themselves in the way they choose. The NYCLU does a fantastic job of getting the right information out to many young people in New York City. However, their comprehensive sex education curriculum adds crucial information within the hands of every New York City student, which makes such a huge difference in the lack of so many people. Thank you all for your time.
Up next, we have Cole Newfield, and then we'll have Sheronne Farmer.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Cole Newfield. I'm a sophomore at Bard High School Early College, Manhattan, and also, surprisingly enough, part of the Teen Activist Program. Throughout my experience in the New York public school system, which has been my entire life, I've noticed a real problem: LGBT plus people are just not represented in the curriculum. More specifically, LGBT plus people are not represented in history or literature in public schools. This might not seem all that pressing, but lack of representation has a profound effect on youth's self-esteem and thus their level of achievement. If you never get to see people like you, how are you supposed to envision what you're capable of? This lack of representation puts queer youth at a disadvantage, and it's the government's responsibility to make sure all students are provided with the same quality of education. This simply is not happening if some students are provided role models and resources while others are left to figure that out on their own. Lack of role models also contributes to feelings of isolation common among queer students, which leads to higher levels of suicidal ideation and self-harm. The fact that there is nothing about the gay rights movement on the regions when there are prompts and questions based on other activist movements like civil rights and women's rights is a huge problem. This contributes to the ratio of LGBT plus people. There are many schools that highly emphasize the regions, and they feel that if it's not being tested on, it shouldn't be taught. LGBT plus people are just as much a part of history as everybody else, and therefore should have a responsibility to be in every public school's curriculum. LGBT people are already a part of many important historical moments. Educators can include this as part of the pre-existing curriculum. For example, when discussing indigenous cultures in class, educators can mention the concept of being Two-Spirit. These might seem like simple add-ons, but to young queer people, they make a world of difference, and there's no reason to exclude something that's already there. Representation matters to me. I was bullied throughout elementary and middle school, and quite honestly, felt like a freak and was called worse. The complete lack of acknowledgement of my existence in a classroom certainly wouldn't help. When I realized I was queer, I searched the internet trying to understand everything I could about my history, and as I sat in the classroom, I would watch pivotal moments in history be pushed back into the closet. Yes, New York is an epicenter of progress, but we must push further and further to stay that way. It was less than thirty years ago when no promo homo laws were being passed left and right. In this current political climate, in a city as rich as LGBT history is in New York, it is negligible not to address this issue. Recently, National AIDS Awareness Day passed without a comment in public schools, and in a city drenched in Keith Haring's murals, in a city where ACTUP was founded, it is truly heartbreaking how many lost queer figures went unacknowledged. Thank you for your time.
Up next, we'll have Sheronne Farmer, and we'll have Joseph Salvatore.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheronne Farmer, and I am a member of New York Civil Liberties Union Teen Activist Project. As a student nearing completion of my secondary education and beginning to move on to higher education, I've become quite familiar with the workings of the New York City public school system. By this, I mean I have experienced the teachers, the classes, and the numerous opportunities afforded to students inside and outside of the classroom. However, they're the stark contrast to the good that I have witnessed in the classroom. This contrast is the prevalence of the school-pre prison pipeline. This school-pre prison pipeline is the systematic pushing of students out of the classroom and into the criminal addressed system. This happens by way of suspensions, exculchons, and detention for actions that are often minor. Repeatedly, punishing students often tells the TTE students why their actions are wrong and thus continually takes them away from classroom instruction time without rhythm or motive, and turn the students often toward lower marks on assessment and are more likely to be held back or forced to attend summer school. The pipeline disproportionately affects students of color, lower-gender, and disability. It is that the system turned its back on these students. In my life, this has been true. At an elementary school, the same group of kids would be repeatedly suspended, held back, and ultimately stuffed with the label of being bad kids. My elementary school lacks of funding and resources that have things like peer-to-grain or mediations in the presence of dad companies' review, while the presence of school may be altered to many. Many students were not informed of their rights nor of their parents. Today, a number of these students attend schools that push them to metal detectors, and an even larger number of them are behind academic need, being left back. The lack of resources invested in these students' education is evident of the New York City's Department of Education's failure to ensure the success of every student. Even in my high school, one of the top high schools in Brooklyn, with both in twenty-one AP classes and classmates who often win high honors in national research competitions, students experienced the school-pre prison pipeline, a few guidance slurs, but a large number of students. Many students in our non-gifted programs wanted a halt and are routinely policed and suspended. To ensure a more addressed educational environment, we must put an end to the pipeline. This can happen by increasing the number of dad companies in schools. Having someone to talk to and support you can go a long way. Additionally, decreasing the number of school safety officers in schools where students are disproportionately targeted will help because this school will begin to prove more like a learning environment and less like a prison. To further aid in ending the pipeline, schools can also introduce peer mediation and two death counts as alternatives to harsh punishment that take away class time. Peer mediation not only goes closer to ties in school communities, but also creates solutions, not just punishments. I would like to thank you all for taking the time to listen and take note of this day of our educational system. Your work to improve this system will benefit generations of students.
Up Joseph Salvatore, and then we'll have Pla.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Salvatore, and I am a senior at Francis Lewis High School and a member of the NYCLU's Teen Activist Project. In my experience, the student body at my school feels that the guidance counselors are ill-equipped to handle students' personal issues. Last year, my friend told them about her issues regarding her personal life, anxiety, and workload. Rather than actually receiving help, she was shuffled from room to room, and her concerns were ultimately ignored. Even when students work up the courage to reach out for help, they are being turned away, which is completely unacceptable. Students are supposed to have access to a spark office and Respect for All Coordinator, but in my experience, most students have no idea that these resources even exist. And this is not an issue just at my school. The NYCLU's Teen Activist Program conducted a survey last year with NYC high school students and found that only nineteen percent of students could identify their school's Respect for All Coordinator. At Francis Lewis, multiple students have tried to harm themselves in school within the same year, which is precisely why policies like Dignity for All Students Act were created. Although the DOE mandates that information about Respect for All Coordinators be available on the school website, there's absolutely no mention of such information. If the DOE enforced their rules by posting information on the school's website and requiring representatives to speak to freshman classes to raise awareness of student resources, students would know they have a safe place to seek help. The three posters sponsoring Respect for All is not enough. We need more guidance counselors and social workers, better training and resources, and accountability. Students deserve a healthy and safe environment, and we need your help to accomplish this. Thank you.
Up next, we have Ben Pla, and then we'll have Orlando Ruch.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Pla. I'm a junior at Stuyvesant High School and a member of the New York Civil Liberties Union's Teen Activist Project. The NYCLU is an outspoken advocate for evidence-based corrections practices that improve public safety and respects fundamental human dignity. Rikers Island is the city's largest jail complex. It's a place where prisoners are often subjected to well-documented brutality. It costs $247,000 to detain someone at Rikers Island for a year, an exorbitant amount, which is due to the isolated location of Rikers Island and the associated transport costs that come with it. Eighty-nine percent of the population of Rikers Island is Black or Hispanic. A problem that we will see shows deeper issues with New York City's criminal justice system. These prisoners often face unfair treatment from officers. Many inmates report racist remarks from officers at Rikers as well, with that fear of repercussions. To make clear this contrast, only fifty-three percent of New Yorkers are Black or Latino. These people are not naturally predisposed to commit crimes or be arrested. Instead, they face unjust treatment by the police and are subject to racial profiling. Two hundred and eleven prisoners are admitted to Rikers every day, an extraordinarily high number compared to other cities around the United States, even accounting for their smaller population size. There are actually ways that we can make closing Rikers Island a reality, and quicker than the ten years the mayor has promised us. We can reduce the population of Rikers by doing the following: decriminalizing low-level offenses to reduce arrests and prosecutions, ensuring the constitutional right to a speed trial, working together to reform profit-driven money-bail practices, moving people with mental health or addiction issues into treatment facilities, eliminating discriminatory policy to remedy the overrepresentation of Black and Brown people, LGBTQ plus people, and gender nonconforming people in the criminal justice system. And lastly, borough-based facilities should be redesigned to reflect safe practices for people detained and court correction officers. People like Paulie Browder deserve justice, and hearing about the constant abuses he suffered at Rikers Island is simply heartbreaking. No one should face the conditions that he did, facing violence not only to fellow inmates but from corrections officers as well. With some of the recommendations shared with you tonight, I truly believe we can shut down Rikers Island. This is an issue that affects many people in New York City, and I hope we can work together to close Rikers Island and reform our criminal justice system.
Next, we have Orlando Ruch, then we will have Janesa Galarza.
Pleasant day off. Having received multiple youth-based services throughout New York City, I know how beneficial they are to assist youths and aid us in progressing to the next stages in our lives. The designs of these programs claim to always aim for better ways to assist unconscious twins, pose high standards of duties to both staff and members, and last but not least, create an environment that is about the youths for the youths, but in actuality does not. As a client, I had a front row seat to assisting that doesn't always morph to better aid the different needs of the clients in the program. No two youths have the same situations and needs, and programs need to create a platform that puts clients' needs first. Being a recently homeless youth and a person of color, immigrant, and also of the LGBTQ A+ community, my needs are going to be different, for example, from a cisgender heterosexual white individual. We need more inclusive programs that do not restrict service based on client's circumstances, but aim to build service plans around the different circumstances of the youths they serve. In the LGBTQ A+ community, we do not always have many organizations providing services as related to dealing with our trauma and the different levels of oppressions and their intersectionalities that we face, and in creating better, healthy life practices. There aren't many sections or places in New York City we can call our own and feel safe as a community. Programs like California and The Lighthouse, owned by Core Services, create an environment that pushes youth, including myself, to focus and achieve our goals while addressing issues that restrict that. Having a staff team that lives up to this high standard of productivity increases the probability of my success in other clients. The program needs to hire staff educated in the various backgrounds and expressions of the different clients they serve. Consequently, this creates a habitat that is about the youth for the youth. A lot of time, programs just focus on the basic requirements as mandated by their funders. Having programs that engage residents in the different facets of the program helps to better shape the program and to provide services that make sense. For example, the director of Lighthouse One has an open road policy. Also, we do have our weekly house meeting where residents are able to give their opinions and recommendations on how the program could be better for us. This makes a program more of a family setting. Even though we five are the Purse Brothers, we always aim to motivate and sleep each other through our. In conclusion, I know there is a great need for more facilities like the one I've described to be located all over New York City. Any facility that can consistently develop their program to better clients, always demanding more efficiency and make the environment youth-focused, is one that funders need to follow more of their assets into. If we do not put our resources into the use of today, what kind of leaders will be taking over tomorrow? Thank you.
Janesa Galarza, then we will have Kalina Saleh.
Good afternoon. My name is Janesa Galarza. I'm fifteen years old, a sophomore at South Carolina Tech, and I'm a proud member of the NYCLU's Teen Activist Project. I am grateful to have this opportunity to speak to all of the important issues that impact all teams attending school. Lack of attention and support for mental health programs, mental health programs is incredibly important at high school and middle school, as it is a time when students are learning how to manage stressors related to the new school environment. Mental health is often pushed aside because people are afraid to speak up about it, some students are afraid to be judged, and some adults perceive that teams lie about having mental illness. In reality, remember, one in five teens suffer from mental disorder, and about twenty percent of teens go through depression or went into delinquency. Only thirty percent of those teens are being treated. I have witnessed how my peers do not always feel safe seeking out help at school through the lack of confidentiality and a lack of sources, resources. Several of my peers have experienced an incident where they invited a school counselor, and their parents were called to report back, even though the counselor barely helped. I myself have got to talk about deep personal issues with the guidance counselor and noticed that after the talk, I would step back to class and never had a check-in, which wouldn't help me. In school, it is assumed that students naturally go in class because they do not prepare well in education, or they're lazy, which is not always true. Half of all chronic mental illnesses begin by age fourteen, and since the mental health being of a student is not top priority in school, it can be made worse because of stigma received by peers, teachers, and parents who are single. There is also real fear of a counselor or teacher exposing students. Suicide is a tempting cause of death in the United States, a second leading cause of death for people ages fifteen to twenty-four, and a third leading cause of death for people ages ten to fourteen. We can reduce suicide by making support systems more accessible in schools, allowing students to know and seek help. We need to show our students that stereotypes about mental illnesses can be helped, but that does not stop them from succeeding well. Confidentiality should be respected and taken seriously between a guidance counselor and student unless they mention abuse, or they think students know it's harmful. Even if abuse is mentioned, counseling needs to be honest about problems involved with other people, and more resources should be available to students around school. I believe there should be safe pools around the school for students who have been abused once or twice. Finally, there should be days at school where students are educated on mental illnesses so that students learn not to participate in harmful stereotypes. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take what I said to consideration.
Next, we have Kalina Saleh, and we have Michael Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Delilah Salay. I'm a junior at the Black Lorette School for Global Innovation and a member of the NYCLU's Teen Activist Project. I'm also a queer and mostly Latino. While I've always been relatively aware of the systems of oppression that affect me because of my identity, I'm lucky enough to live in the most diverse city in the world, surrounded by people that look, think, and talk just like me. Because of this, I've always felt unsafe. But until elections like the last year, I started to doubt my safety, started to doubt that my fundamental rights would be protected and that my existence would not be threatened or attacked. This has led to a great deal of anxiety, which I'm sure is shared by many of you. Since Donald Trump was elected, life is going to be never a nightmare. Rights of minorities are seemingly always under threat, and it is taking a giant toll on our mental health. This has led teams in marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever, and unfortunately, they are not getting adequate support in their schools. In fact, oftentimes, schools only add to the stress that teens face daily, instead of serving as a state payment for the constant violence and punishment in society and political climate that only perpetuates it. There are currently more police than safety, secure officers within schools in NYC than guidance officers. That is not something we should go pay for. What message should we send towards students? That the city sees us as threats, that their mental health is in danger? This is a sentiment that is echoed throughout many public schools. There are over two hundred million schools in NYC where students of color, multilingual backgrounds suffer from building and learning, and are met with police officers and metal detectors. There are schools that hold prisons, and their non-environmental citizens are building and learning, instead creating an atmosphere of distress, fear, and lack of dignity and respect for the students. Metal detectors are often installed in schools as a response to chronic violence and mental deterioration. While this may be an error of security, it doesn't address the larger problems at play, often with factors mental health and trauma. Conversely, in schools such as St. John's Hospital, there is a very high pressure placed on students' normal academic behavior. Despite two hundred runners' worth of it, this could be good to be detrimental to their mental health. More and more, the students are faced with overwhelming stress and anxiety. Due to the lack of access to positive mental health resources, entrusted with drugs and CMTs just to end up being caught and punished by the system who favors the poor and the common to begin with. Regardless of the school environment, overarching problem remains in the schools of NYC. Some students tend to blame it as a way to cope with their negative feelings. This is an issue faced by all teams regardless of identity. Recent jail estimate studies show that LGBTQ teens have disproportionate privilege and harassment status. There are also five times more likely to have attempted suicide when they're straight and face counterfeits, according to the other reports. Examples listed above indicate that the health program for NYC students is not as comprehensive as it should be. According to school.nyc.gov, students are required to take just one semester of daily health classes. It is mandatory that sexual health education is covered, however, there is no mention of mental health. This is not acceptable. Almost all students will at some point feel negative emotions, anxiety, stress, and anxiety, depression. It is vital that we not only improve mental health in our health programs, but that becomes normalized. We need to have comprehensive health education systems. We need to provide proper resources for vulnerable students. We need to start seeing students as human beings, not threats, not prisoners, not machines. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Michael Davis, then we'll hear from Liam O'Callum. Then we'll hear from Jawara Hudson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Davis. I'm here to basically talk about a program called EXOL, a non-profit organization. Basically, teens that's involved in the criminal justice system. I was just accidentally, actually, I came to take EXOL today to talk about getting enrolled in school and stuff like that. My teacher, the staff director, actually wanted to come here and talk about EXOL and tell you guys what it's about, so I was just wanted to. I think EXOL is a great program for the youth going into criminal justice system now, because some kids don't think they have a chance of getting a regular job or getting back into school when they have gotten locked up or dropped out for whatever reason. But EXOL teaches you things you don't learn in school, things that will benefit you, things that you will benefit from and succeed with getting a job and retaining it, such as code switching, knowing how to use the right slang in a professional environment, responding and not reacting, which will... Responding and not reacting, learn a thing before you do what goes wrong way and save you many ways. Also, you learn how to fill out job applications, how to have a good intern interview. You can also earn money during time in EXOL, you can earn extra money if you show a difference. In many ways, that will push kids to actually want to continue to do better. I personally didn't come to EXOL for the money, even though that was in the back of my mind. But I came to EXOL because I found out that they were helping me close my court cases, which I have two court cases open. And I might enroll to school, so I always think about what the judge would think about me if I might enroll to school and if she would just send me straight back. But yeah, my cycle that I'm prisoning in right now, it's ten plus left, and we're all... We all have internships ready for us. I personally have an interview on Friday lined up for me to work with Native Brownsville. Basically, a program or a shop. I'm a professional, I make my own clothes, so that's really good for me. And you all just want to graduate and be good, have all our cases closed. And I really think, like the first speaker was saying, this is a good program for this... It's a bit disconnected, because in many ways, I was disconnected, and it's just helping me get back into school and getting a job and retaining it, like I said. And that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for listening, and...
Next, we have Jawara Hudson, then we will have Tamali Henry.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jawara Hudson. I am the director of the Beacon Program, Flatbush, Brooklyn. I've been running the program for over twenty years at that location. I just have three points kind of to make here. I love the fact that we have a lot of people here from various agencies in New York City. I run a really good youth council program, and sometimes we run into issues in terms of planning and executing youth service projects. I would love to have the agencies up here, you know, kind of, if possible, pull together and create service projects for youth who are looking to get back to their communities. Often, you have to search and dig and find, you know, even with the internet, it's still hard to find things. And they're there, it's just hard to find them, either they're posted or, and I don't know. It'd be great if we could get something going. There are ninety-one beacons in the city. If there's something we can do to create a huge service project for all ninety-one to be a part of, I think that'd be something awesome for the city. I also... We also need help identifying project and things of that nature, those I'm sure many of the agencies have up there. I also want to address in terms of working together as agencies of New York City, working or being a director of a program. Obviously, we come into contact with many of the agencies who either license, fund, or otherwise interact with our programs. But I find that the regulations that come out of these varying agencies often differ. They go different directions, and we're stuck in the middle, wondering how can we please both parties? And sometimes, it's not a happy medium to meet, because both want what they want. I also want to talk about safety in schools, which ultimately reaches after-school. We are in buildings, beacon programs are in buildings, we rent them through the DOE, through a permit process. And I find myself very much dissatisfied with the level of service that we get from the NYPD school safety agents. Either they're absent, they're not on post, in some cases, they need training. And often, a lot of these things that are happening in building and schools are happening in their absence. They're not there, they're not where they need to be to be able to be visible, so some of these things do not happen. And if this is happening during the school day, you can imagine what's happening in the after-school, where it's not necessarily the point, time of the day where services are needed greatly. And it brings down the atmosphere of the after-school programs. So I'm asking, you know, the agencies that are here, NYPD, if we could step up on trainings and maybe spot inspection, I don't know, see what's going on in the schools, because if not, the trend of the violence and things that are going on will continue in the schools. Thank you.
At this point, we are halfway through the hearing. So up next, we have Tamali Henry, and then we will have Azim Nwosi.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Tamali Henry, councilmember from the Flatbush Beacon Center. This proposal is being addressed towards DYCB and DOJ. On Monday's protest against there are unjust suicides and beacon programs that don't go around. We all travel from different schools near and far to get to our respective beacon or after-school programs. Schools give out different types of mental cards based on student's distance from home to the school, which fails to take into account the students' travel to after-school programs and extra further activities. The majority of students who travel to beacon are limited to two parental cards, or mental cards that expire at eight p.m. Some participants leave after the school program at seven thirty to eight thirty. Groups are active after activities such as youth council, basketball, team house, and etc. Not all participants live in local districts. These participants typically struggle with travel at the gate and no longer use their mental card. Their alternatives shouldn't have to be those two-way travel that they provide for walking their way home. We don't want any participants getting stuck on their way home. Keep a student safe, and walk the streets is our priority. But a priority that states need is a safe travel option. MTA steadily recognize the fear in putting one year mental card at on. Those students who limit our places and places out of this community should be in their mental card attached on the MTA busker train to their, when they are leaving beacon or after-school. Even already dead train passes imply that the children are more beneficial if prevented as a purpose. This student is part of the community, actually, their activities and those of the community.
Up next, we have Azim Nwosi, we have Ugochi Nwosi.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Azim Nwosi from the Flatbush Beacon Center Youth Council, and I would like to address my statement and question towards Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. This issue is free access to medical screenings. Some people have to pay to get medical screenings but can't afford it, so they go without it. Some young people can't afford the sliding scale fees from doctors to get medical, to work, or to get into certain programs, programs like summer camps, for example. Summer camp programs like the beacon that I attend require a physical from every child per DOA regulations because of their likes. Schools require medical and immunizations. NYC is supposed to be a shelter state, therefore, it is expected that lots of people don't have health insurance. So I am asking if the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene could help to create some free health screening facilities in every borough to tackle this issue that is ongoing, and if there are established free health screenings where on hand. Thank you.
Next, we have Ugochi Nwosi, and then we have Kayla Rosco.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Ugochi Nwosi, and I'm a member of the council from Beacon, Flatbush Beacon. I would like to address my statement to DYCB and the Mayor's Office of Domestic Violence. Students leave beacon at 5:45 the earliest or eight o'clock the latest and live far or down the block. Some walk with siblings, friends, or by themselves and immediately become a target. So how can students be safe if they don't know how to protect themselves? How would students know how to respond to a time where someone attacks them and no one helps? I'm asking if the DYCB and the Mayor's Office of Domestic Violence could help create self-defend classes and after-school programs to make sure students get home safe. Thank you.
Kayla Rosco, and then we will have Rashawn Chase.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Kayla Rosco, and I would like to address this deal with the DOE. Some children learn different, some learn visually and others learn visually. So why not find easy ways to learn this? I think that there should be programs in different schools that can help children learn and catch on faster. Those programs can be held in school and after-school. For example, learning for trade, electrical... Electrical, plumbing, or audio and video.
Next, we have Rashawn Chase, then we have Kaseyun Cassis.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Rashawn Chase, and I work, learn, and grow at the Beacon Center and at the UCL. We work, learn, and grow for ten hours a week. And the cost of living in New York City is being higher and higher. And when you're a single parent, trying to pay bills, taxes, and etc., it's hard. And as a child, watching mom and daddy and all of this, it's hard, and I can't really do anything. I just hope that our teenagers can work longer so we can make more money to help our parents and save off the cost of this. Thank you.
Up next, we have Kaseyun Cassis, and then we'll have Delilah Roach.
Good afternoon, panel. My name is Katie Harris. I'm part of the beacon council. And the topic of discussion is being addressed to the NYPD and the DOE. This generation has been through a lot, especially the census killing of one class made by another. I know by now you have heard of the incident that went down four months ago. I heard that there was a student inside of Bronx High School that was murdered during an alternation with another student. Thus, a student's life was taken away from him. That's why I feel we should have surveillance cameras in every classroom to be able to monitor what is taking place inside these classrooms. Another thing we can do to promote on a daily basis as a reminder to respect each other's feelings, looks, genders, sexual preferences, and ethnicities. This should be our goal towards peace and unity among each other and in our community. That this way, that in any way, something like this happens again, we can have official proof on how each student treats one another in a classroom environment. Too many children's lives are at risk if we don't act now, because at the end of the day, the life of a student is what is most important. Thank you for your time.
Keisha Pips. Keisha Pips, and then we'll have Ayad Sartre Martinez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Keisha Pips and I'm the vice president of Core Services Group. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about issues facing homeless and runaway youth here in New York City. Core operates three programs, one at the Lighthouse. There are transitional and open-ended programs, two in the Bronx and one in Brooklyn. And those are under contract with DYCB. We provide transitional housing and social services to sixty-four youth, and we're hoping to expand those services to New York City. We also operate a thousand beds of residential reentry... We also operate a thousand beds of residential reentry center, homeless shelters and transitional residences for other clients who we see on a daily basis. And for us, these are the people who we make interventions, uh, like transitional programs, um, not available to them. Or perhaps, you know, despite the city's best efforts, they fell through the cracks in its complex social services, which is what we have very clearly. Our goal is to make sure that nobody falls into the practices that are provided, the clients have the opportunity to develop, uh, their independent skills and hopefully stay in a stable setting. Youth between the ages of 16 and 21 face a complex and critical stage of personal growth. Youth experience, experiencing homelessness outside of their families, forced to negotiate their development in a context of their lax stability, uh, safety and basic life needs like housing, movement, and, these, uh, programs are critically important. The homeless youth, uh, at the Lighthouse program, some come in, they are LGBTQ, most face victims of trauma, child abuse, uh, domestic violence, in some cases, they're entering the foster care system, uh, they've been thrown away by their families just based on, um, you know, whether it's, uh, discord or parents objecting to their lifestyles, uh, gender identity, sexual orientation, the reasons they come into our programs are quite varied. But at the end of the day, we have to work on creating an individualized program to help them succeed. And we know that access to housing can really serve as a turning point for them to be able to have that stable footing where they have the opportunity to come, you know, literally come in out of the cold and reclaim their lives. And we've had a lot of success stories. We've had people, uh, you know, transition to college, we've had youth re-going to school, we've had decreases in substance abuse, we've had clients access to mental health. Um, because we know that the issue of growing, like, like, like society is more complex, one of the things that we want to really advocate for with our youth is increasing the limit at which they have to exit. Right now, the age limit is 21. Our goal is to, I think right now, it's under consideration for it to be extended to 24. That's something that we really support because we recognize that for them to really develop, um, a meaningful life, a life plan, and really work on their goals, they need more time. And that would allow providers like us to not have to discharge clients before they're ready. And so really, we wanted, uh, support any discussions around increasing the age and certainly increasing the time limits that people can stay in. Thank you.
Up next, we have Alexandra Martinez. And then we'll have Leah Brown and Candy John.
My name is Alexandra Martinez and I'd like to, I'd like to start off by, um, just seeing how inspired I am, listening to all of our young advocates out here. Um, I am a social work, uh, graduate student at Kingsbridge Heights Community Center. I am currently in the Adult Services Department, which primarily focuses on ESOL classes. I'm the first and only social worker in that department. Um, and I've really seen the need, um, of providing mental health services and social services to this specific population. Um, as our presenters expressed earlier, there is, uh, a lot of stigma around mental health services. Um, a lot of our students are undocumented and given the political climate, there's an increase in mental health service need. Um, but there's also a lot of lack of, um, accessing these kinds of resources. And as the presenter mentioned earlier, I saw so many parallels between the, um, Asian community as well as our ESOL students. Um, the ESOL program is such a good, um, program to really embed social services and mental health services, um, making it easy for students to access. A lot of, um, our students are parents, and so providing these kinds of services will really impact our families and, um, children in the Bronx community. Um, more specifically, it's really not only a high need, but it's often overlooked. And so I'm really asking all of our community partners to consider providing funding and increasing it as well, since this isn't, uh, there is no full-time social worker working with our students. Uh, thank you for your time.
Uh, so we, up next, we have Candy John and Leah Brown. And then if there's anyone else that would like to testify, if you could just take a minute and register outside, that'd be great.
Okay. Hello, my name is Leah Brown. I am a resident of Lighthouse Two, and I just wanted to say thank you to DYCE for funding, um, our home, which is Lighthouse Two. Um, it's a traditional independent living program that allows homeless youth to have somewhere to call home, even though it's only temporary. Um, I never knew the severity of how many, the severity of how many homeless youth there are until I actually became homeless myself. Um, I think that schools should provide resources for teens that become homeless while they are in school, because when I became homeless, no one told me that there were places like the Covenant House and transitional independent living. So I was out there to find it for myself. Um, and I think that, yeah, schools should support getting the message out there that there are other places for them to go, so that they aren't left out by themselves to look. And...
Hi, my name is Candy. I'm representing Lighthouse Two as the youth advisor, and I currently live in a tail program. Lighthouse Two is a newly opened tail program with the capacity of 20 girls. There is a difference between a house and a home. A house is a building, but Lighthouse Two gives that homey feeling due to unconditional love and care which are provided to us. Ms. Davis and her team of workers strive profoundly to make the residents feel welcomed and appreciated. Ms. Davis treats us, all residents, as if we are her own children. She proves this by her open door policy as well as her signature Sunday dinners, where we all come together, eat, talk, laugh, and book. She's a director that goes over and beyond her duties, and we appreciate her for that. We've many opportunities such as job offers for different companies, housing assistance, and of course, a lot of advice as adults. Our staff are extremely helpful with whatever situation one finds themselves at law school. I can't forget to mention, with the association of DYCE, we get the opportunity to have open doors to the arts, open to us as well as many more. In conclusion, Lighthouse Two is an amazing home with an equally magnificent director and staff. We are grateful, thankful to the lovely and exhilarating Ms. Davis as well as DYCE for the opportunity to take part in such a tremendous experience, an experience in which we are able to find ourselves by feeling safe and secure. Thank you for your time.
Lauren, thank you so much. Uh, I, I reached over to Lauren, I said, "You're gonna be handling this whole piece." Lauren's gonna be leaving us pretty soon, she's getting her master's, her, her W for Columbia. And so, I'm gonna be handing over the mic to my facilitator, the man responsible for everything, but before I do, I'm gonna take an opportunity, I really want the young people to please stand up. Please stand up. Come on, y'all. Especially my own mother. Please stand up. And we want you to stand up, it's because you are awesome. You are marvelous, amazing. As Ms. Martinez said, she wanted to thank the advocates, the future advocates. You are really gonna have to change this whole system around. In a couple of years, uh, when I heard your age, I said, "Ha, but in two years, she could vote." Okay? So 16 now, 18 when, uh, all these elections are gonna come. And for the bottom of our heart, I'm gonna thank you so much for your participation, for your words of wisdom, for opening up your heart and sharing it with all the panel members here. And I know that if everybody was, was asked, they would say the same thing. For the bottom of our heart, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. I want to introduce my, my supervisor, who signs my timesheets, Jessica Liz Hernandez. She's the senior director for all the cornerstone in the city of New York.
Okay, if I, I may just take one more minute of your time. Uh, at this portion of our program, we will be recessing. That doesn't mean the public hearing is over. Uh, however, folks that have testified have already done so. Uh, we're obligated to stay here until six, so we will. Those of you who don't have to stay here till six, uh, feel free to maybe go and join us, but by all means, we want to thank our panel, all sister agencies here. Thank you very much for your time here. And, um, the goal of this hearing is to make this publication available, uh, video on our webpage, and you will all get a copy of this sheet, so if it all reflects the package of your agencies. So at this point in time, we will be recessing. Thank you very much for your time.